I don't know, are you allowed to do that? I don't think so.
Are we just recording on you?
No, not with Frank sitting there.
Good idea.
Did you hear something? Did Steve only hear? John, I'm putting this in the middle in case you have anything to say.
Mostly listening tonight.
Yeah, tonight's gonna be fun. Well, it's fun to have a...
That's the executive session.
That is our... Hearing Frank present will be fun. I hate looking like I'm the only one here.
No, that's all right. You're fine. It's all about Frankie.
I know, so then you know what I'll do on this one? I can put this on. All right, Andrea, are you about ready or is it not working? Want me to bring mine over there and he can use mine? We are recording already on YouTube, so. I went ahead and started it, so, since we're kind of casual tonight. Why don't we say the Pledge of Allegiance and open the meeting while we're waiting to get logged in? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Well, thanks. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Oh, wait, one more. Want to use this one, Andrea? Need some help, Frank? You got John, much.
Maybe you introduce, I guess, for the audience.
As soon as Andrea's ready.
This is nice.
Thank you for the notice about your car problems.
Oh, you're welcome. Terrible, huh? That's right. No, it's good to remember. Keep them locked, which we've never really done. So Andrea, are we ready? Oh, I thought you did that one. I think they both have to be on, and I'll just mute my own. All right. Good evening, everyone. This is our August 5th work session of the Town Board. Our casual meeting, and I say casual, meaning we don't really, we don't have an agenda, but we use the time for the Town Board members and special guests so that we can dive into subjects that are of importance. And certainly, the Duchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce's Hot Air Balloon Festival is of great importance to us. We're looking forward to it. So we have two special guests here tonight. One is the President of the Chamber of Commerce, Frank Costella, and also the Captain...
The Chief.
I was just looking at you saying, "I knew I was gonna get that wrong." I'm gonna call you King in a minute. Chief Steve Schmoke from the Unionville Fire Department, and we're lucky, we're looking forward to a great discussion. Jake Osnell, our Parks Manager is here. All the Town Board members are here, and our Planning Board Chair is actually here. Pat Cardlemi in the back, and Mrs. Tillman, our regular, is with us. So that's our discussion group, and at this point, I'm gonna turn everything over to President. Do they call you President Costella?
No. I can't tell you what.
Would they really call you? Well, I ended right over here. Take it away. Thanks.
Well, thank you for the time today. I certainly want to thank the Board for allowing us to come back this year. When we approached this last year, we certainly didn't know what we were in for. We were, we had a lot of questions, but we felt as though that this was going to be a terrific venue, and it turned out to be, I think, exactly what we had hoped for for last year. Everyone was safe. We had no major concerns that came out of it, other than a few neighborly concerns, just to improve on for this year. And I think it was a great learning lesson and a great way to ease into what we will talk about tonight. This will be the 30th iteration for us for the balloon festival here in the Hudson Valley, and this year, we're proud to bring on JP Morgan Chase as a lead sponsor. They came to the festival last year. They loved it so much, even as a drive-in style, that they were willing to contribute well over $20,000 towards underwriting it, which has gone a long way for us, because over the last year, as you can imagine, a lot of small businesses have been able to continue their support for the festival. So it actually ended up being an even swap, if you will, but we were grateful for JP Morgan for coming in to help really save the event. Without them, we wouldn't be able to do it. Of course, we'll be back with Botini Fuel feeling all the hot air balloons this year and Q92.1 being our media sponsor. So they'll be here on site all weekend long with their personalities. The hot air balloon buffoon, the balloonatic, and we have hot airborne Annie. So those are, those are the humorous elements that they will bring to it. This festival this year is going to be a little bit different than last year, as you can imagine. We are now allowed, as per state guidelines, to fully open, and that would mean we're able to have in-person, an in-person event where the spectators will be up close and personal with the balloons as we normally would be. Fortunately, we, we have really been constrained as far as what we think we can bring in for attendance for a variety of reasons. One, we were very concerned about the pandemic coming back. We wanted to go into this conservatively. And we also like the idea of having the option, should we have a problem of going back to a drive-in style, so in other words, should COVID spike again, we have that option here, and this venue lends itself to a nice natural amphitheater to have that drive-in style event once again. One thing that really presents itself as a challenge for us is parking. Whenever we do an event like this, it is one of the major challenges for us, amongst others. Like, so, we're trying to keep this event each day well under the 5,000 mark. The 5,000 mark is, you may be aware, may not be aware, is the mark where you have to go for a mask gathering permit. All that to say, we still are following most of those guidelines, because we typically would do that anyway. In other words, we would like to have an ambulance on site, if we can have an ambulance on site regardless of not being required to do so, and a lot of the other protocols that will take place, such as a parking plan and your safety and security plan, all the things that they require you to have as part of a mass gathering permit. We'll still follow those protocols. We have that checklist, and we have already gone through that with our staff, and they're all underway of working on that. So we are working on that in-person event this year, and we have come up with a parking plan, working with, a little bit with Jake, and of course Supervisor Moss, and coming up with the, what we think will be a workable solution conservatively of fitting nearly 1,400 cars on site. We figure that there's probably about two and a half people per car on average, and that's just historical, what we see. Although we will find that this is mostly a demographic of people coming from typically out of the area. While we think of 20 to 25% of the people will be local, the majority of people come from out of the area, so we will see quite a bit of carpooling, I think, in that regard. We, we have the dates set right now for the Labor Day Weekend, which is the 3rd through the 5th of September, and we have scheduled launches on five different occasions. The nice thing about Labor Day Weekend for us is that we have Sunday night as an option for us to keep the balloonists here, where typically, it's very hard to keep balloonists, because they, a lot of those folks work, this is a hobby for them, this is not their paid career or job. While the commercial pilots that we do bring in, they don't typically do this for money. So they will be here Sunday evening, which allows us to not only have the balloon launch on Sunday evening, but we'll have a moon glow and something new this year, which we will be doing in conjunction with the moon glow each night. The moon glow, for those of you who don't know, is the illumination of the hot air balloons in the evening at dusk. We will add fireworks to that each evening, which will be launched from the other side of Timor, which is between Shaughnessy and Duncan in the field, I guess where you have watched them in the past before. Legion Fireworks will be our partner on that. They've provided us and named the town additionally insured. Of course, we do that with all of our policies. We'll talk a little bit about insurance when we get down to my agenda list here. We do have entertainment that'll be here, so we'll have for kids, we'll have BB the Clown here, we'll have a magician walking around and doing some entertainment. We will have field games out amongst the tents, so I have provided some maps to you, and there is a blown-up version of the larger map. If you look at the blown-up version, there is a beer and wine tent in there, so we have filed for an SLA permit. We have partnered with Sluke Brewing Company this year. I know Jake is happy with that, and this is a local brewery here in the Hudson Valley, and they are based right here in Duchess County, so we're very happy to be able to support a local brew company. They'll be pouring all of the beer and wine for us in that tent. They filed for that permit with us, and we, they are insured for that and have also named the town, as well as us additionally insured. The, in that blown-up version, you'll see that the plan is to keep that infield predominantly open for the balloonists to be able to launch their balloons. We have changed the format and the way it will function in terms of how they will come in and out of there. There is a opening in the fence down to the lower bottom. You can see down here, that is marked as where the entrance will be for the balloonists to be able to access into the field. There will be vendors in there. We have a list of vendors that I've provided to you, but we have signed up thus far. While we were late with our advertising this year and getting them in now, because the state was very kind enough to delay things for us, but nevertheless, we still have quite a good showing of vendors, and I think this is going to grow. I don't think exponentially, but I'm just a little concerned that we're a little light on the food, savory food in particular, for the amount of people that we would expect. So it's a good showing, though, I think, of food trucks and vendors. They are all self-contained, they will not need power, sewer, and water. We do need some limited power, which I'll be working with Jake on, just pulling a few cords from here and there for sound system. That's part of what we would typically do for the mass gathering permit. They would require us to have a PA system, that's something that we think is important. If you have a lost child, for example, we want to keep that as an option for us to be able to make announcements. That's very critical, and that's one example of an emergency that may come up. So we do have that at our leisure. Here is also in that infield, some area for parking. It's marked VIP and handicap parking. It may end up being balloonist parking. In other words, they come to the crew, help support them, and they have chase vehicles. They're going to need a place to be, so that may end up being for them there. Of course, iHeartRadio will be in here. In terms of a traffic plan, if you go to the larger map, the thought was that we would park the hill, which is to the right side of Town Hall on this map. We think that we can put about 650 or so cars in that area. Last year, we were able to get closer to 700 in there, and that was kind of a conservative number, and we did not park the whole thing, because if you remember, there was a couple challenges there. One, we kept the cars far apart. Two, we parked them single instead of double, so in other words, instead of nose to nose, it was just single row, single row, single row. So that will give us some more capacity. And we didn't park the whole field, because some of that field is not really a great view to the lower field. So I think we can get more vehicles in there, but I did keep pretty much the same number of vehicles that was on the map from last year. We'll park about the same. I am working with the Civil Air Patrol on that. The Civil Air Patrol you've worked with here in the community days, they're predicting that they'll need about 10 people to park in all the locations, and of course, we'll supplement that with some additional staffing that ours, who have done this before and understand how I'd like to see it. So we are also going to be using some of what is up in Town Hall. My biggest challenge with this is keeping open enough handicap parking for people. We do find that there is a significant number of handicapped parking stickers that are out there, and we want to make sure we accommodate them appropriately. So we have left the lot, that is, the gravel lot down by the garage in the lower field, open for not only VIP, but also handicap, which is important, and then there will also be some balloonist parking in there as well. So that, I went down there this evening just to double-check it. I think I can get more like 80 cars in there, but marked as 60, but I went down to see what was there this evening and how they were parked, and I can pretty much count on putting 80 vehicles in there. Then there is the upper soccer fields, which would allow us to park additional vehicles in there. So the parking plan would be that folks would arrive coming off of predominantly Route 55 from Roosevelt Road. We would fill that lot up, that is, to the right side of Town Hall on this map, and then we would move over to the soccer fields and start filling that up second. That's on the way in. On the way out, we would have two crews running those, and all the vehicles coming out of the lot that is to the right of Town Hall would be shoved out to, which would be their left on the map, to the right, up Roosevelt Road to 55, and the folks coming out of the soccer field would be sent to the left as they exit, and they would be sent out to 55 that way via Dorn Road, which is out there. So that would cover the parking plan. Now, one of the concerns that came out of last year, and I think it's a very valid one, was from some local folks, and you can see, I sent out a letter, which was included in some of the items I passed out. I didn't send it out, but I delivered them into mailboxes in and around the area, including every mailbox on Duncan Road, every mailbox on Roosevelt Road, that all the way up to the other end, and that Shaughnessy Road, and a few other side roads in this area, immediate area, just so that way folks were aware that this was happening. I was concerned about horses, one, the animals, the cows. The hot air balloons can spook them. I don't want to have any accidents from that standpoint, but also letting them know that this was happening and to avoid Duncan Road, if possible, Timor, letting them know that Timor Park is closed, Timor Park Road is closed, rather, on that day, and some other items. And if they have questions, they can email me. I did get some questions, so, and they were just mostly of, and so concerns, people parking on Roosevelt Road as they did last year, I guess people were pulling over on Roosevelt Road last year. So we did address that. We already purchased signs for no parking along there that will go up. We will also have additional signage, much more signage than there was last year. You'll see that. There'll probably be about 200-plus signs that will go around for different things. Marking parking, marking handicap, marking where the balloonists go, marking where the entrances are, exits are, and so forth. So it does address the concerns that I did receive from folks in the public. Of course, they're always welcome to reach out to me if there are additional concerns, and certainly always open to that, to making it better.
We have active bears here. On Charleston, in the park. Have you seen their bear lately? Or the two young ones? They're at your house. They're at mine house, too.
But it's not somebody in a costume.
No, no, it's a real bear.
So I need bear signs now.
And there's bear poo, and it's not just in the woods.
And I wouldn't, you know, folks coming up from not out of the area may not realize that that is a real animal. Yeah. Right. So there are, were a couple little things that came up with our meeting with Jake and with the supervisor about keeping the pool open and allowing folks to come in there, so that will be accessed by Timor Park Road. We have marked off some spots there, as well as up at Town Hall, that will be open for some spots that will be left open there for individuals that need to access those facilities. And one addition that we have this year, you see on this map, is the helicopter. Helicopter rides. Heather Howley from Independent Helicopters is a partner of ours and has been for, I guess it's gotta be close to eight years now that we've been working with Heather on this, and she operates two helicopters for an event like this. If she's busy enough, she's already taking reservations for it, and we've identified this spot on the other side of Fiskel Creek for helicopter rides, because it's very accessible, one for the helicopter, safe for the helicopter, there's no wires there to worry about or anything of that nature over there. Plus, the bridge itself acts as a natural thoroughfare to keep people away, so they can pretty much station someone there, and that's where they will monitor. So that is a nice addition, too. You'd be surprised how many people will enjoy that, and I've asked her to take a look at the flight pattern in and out of there, so she's not buzzing over houses and over farms. So she has done that and said that she's pretty confident that she's not going to be bothering anyone. And if we do get calls and complaints, which has happened, and Steve may remember this one, in another venue that we were at, we would get a call from people that they were concerned about either the helicopter, they thought maybe it was going down, because they're not used to seeing it, one, which is good, to let people know that this is happening, that they're aware that it's happening, but also that it's a constant annoyance to them. So she has made me confident, according to her, that they have a pretty good flight pattern in mind, which will put them up and out, over the valley and back. So it is a nice addition. If you have the opportunity to do it, it's well worth taking a ride with them. We will be using the equestrian center a little bit. We'll be using that for some of our staff parking and for vendor parking. It is a little bit of a distance for the vendors and staff, because the first one's in, the last one's out, so naturally, at night, it's going to be a little dark, but I am addressing also that with some light towers that we're bringing in. I'm not going to be putting them in the equestrian center as much as my concern, areas where the people are, of course, going to their cars, finding their way back at night. Obviously, it's going to be a little bit of a different landscape for them in the evening, so I have rented four light towers that are diesel-generated, and they will be placed. And they're marked here on this map with a little blue circle. Actually, the key is down on the lower right-hand side. That'll also identify the pedestrian path of where we will follow people through. Naturally, you can't stop people from doing what they want to do all the time, but we will try our best, given that the facility really isn't designed to follow people for an event like this, but we're going to put up some temporary roping with signage and follow people through. If you follow those red dots on this map down into really one convergence area, which will bring them down to Timor Park Road and around the parking lot. The idea is to avoid the parking lot and around the parking lot, and fence that in, so that way they can go through the ticketing area. And that's a little bit more visible on the enlarged map, where you'll see they'll be going through ticket tents there, basically, where they'll be scanned in. And then next to that, we'll have an information tent as well, so people can get information about what's happening. The other thing that's on there is a trackless train, which will be rolling around. Kids love it. It's basically a little diesel-generated train that's pulled by a tractor, and he's done this with us for a number of years now, and it's just a nice element to have, something for them to do. I would anticipate people will use the park. I think they're going to go out and they're gonna go under the swing sets, and they're going to go down the slides and things like that, so there's nothing really stopping them from using that side of the park, but I am staying away from the side where the pool is, for no other reason than it is easier to concentrate on one main area with people. So that's where we placed all the activities purposely. I didn't put a band on that stage purposely. It's a lot of area to cover for staffing. We do have a much smaller staff than we typically would due to COVID reasons, so we're going to really concentrate on this main launch field area. Also have a designated area for picnic. You see, that'll be, that'll be marked out, also have some signage up there, so people can bring their blankets and chairs. When we were at the fairgrounds with this, people utilized the grandstands. They would go up in the grandstands, and we never thought in a million years we'd fill those grandstands at the fairgrounds, but there wasn't a seat to be had in them. People would sit and watch the hot air balloons play, fly, which has given us the idea to add some additional programming to it as time had gone on. The balloonists will be doing throughout the day, each day, they'll have a, I'm not gonna say a performance, but they're gonna have an educational component to this, where they'll go through all the elements of hot air balloons, hot air ballooning, what it means to be a pilot, the things that affect ballooning, and basically talk about all of aspects of hot air balloon, which is kind of a neat thing. So people can sit and watch that as well. Really, that covers the basis for the full layout of how we're setting things up. We do have a few small challenges that I have to work through. I mentioned tonight, we had a little washout. We did bring in a little gravel last year to fill in. I should say, actually, I had a little help with that, but it was, it was necessary, because the cars were bottoming out in one area, going up into the field as they were coming in. So that was washed away. I do have to have that addressed, and then a couple of minor things, just one thing that came up is where's the septic down below for the bathrooms down there? I don't want people driving stakes into that if we're putting tents up. I want to make sure we stay away from that. I don't want to be parking heavy vehicles on it. That was just a thought that we had. All these little details that go into the backend of this and thinking about it, we just want to make sure that our bases are covered. Some of the things I also included are marketing materials, more or less, to give you an idea. The one flyer that's eight and a half by 11 just kind of gives you an idea of the activities that'll be here, of course, the website information. But then we have the Hot Air Balloon Tribune, which was published by the Kipsey Journal for us. They do this annually, and it is distributed by them as well. It also goes into the journal and then is additionally distributed. That has a schedule in there, which doesn't have every detail in it, but it has the basis of when their launch times are, morning and evening. Will be morning launches, one nice addition to the morning launches this year, if you're into it, morning yoga. We have someone coming in, and they're going to be doing yoga with the hot air balloons in the morning. So it is, it is a neat element. People do love it, and that will be brought to us by Telegrino Building Large Center in Hyde Park. One other item is the insurance, and I did pass around the policy last year. It did come up about the insurance policy. They were very late in getting it to us last year, as they typically are every year when it comes to binding it. So I thought, when we start the conversation, I'll at least let them give me the coverage in case there's any questions or concerns on that. This is the coverage that we are binding with them. I have given them permission, as of this morning, to go ahead and bind it. I don't have the policy yet, because they will go through and they will go into detail with checking on the balloonists and making sure, you know, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. It's obviously a very comprehensive policy, given that it is, you know, having aircraft involved, so it's an aviation policy.
Are you gonna add the town official on short?
Yes.
And it's already, this is already set this on, please send on additional.
Right. I even added a few things on here that she said wasn't necessary, but, you know, I went to a five, I went to a $3 million policy this year, which is above and beyond our existing policy for the chamber. So actually, I think combined, I think it might be closer to 5,000, or 5 million, I'm sorry, but the, the policy we had last year was only a million, and I felt like a million doesn't really matter. So I'm going to a $3 million policy. I thought it was a better way to go. It adds policy on here for any of the rentals as well, so I'll be naming, obviously, the town for the rents of the facility, and certainly our tent vendors, and like I mentioned, the light towers, things of that nature, bathrooms, something I did not mention. Trying to avoid people in the public using the bathrooms here on site. I'd like them to use the port lotties. I tell people aren't happy with doing that, but there's just no way with that volume of people at the bathrooms here would sustain that kind of volume. So we are also bringing in bathroom attendants to be roaming and cleaning, making sure that there's toilet paper in them, and that's their job, is just to go through the bathrooms and make sure that they are clean and stocked. We also are bringing in a garbage person for that same reason. We have a partnership with Royal Parting Service Company. They'll be dropping a dumpster here for us, also all the receptacles for us as well, so that way we're not overfilling. all the receptacles for us as well, so that way we're not overfilling the receptacles that are here.
Where are they dropping the dumpster?
The dumpster's going to be down near the, yeah, near where the maintenance shed are, where you store the tractors. Down that way, where the trucks are.
Do you have wash stations?
Yes, yeah. Also rented the washing stations. I also purchase sand, hand sanitizing stations and fire extinguishers, something that's not required, but, you know, we certainly feel that it's good to hang.
Disturbed to use the port of Johnson for the wash station.
The wash stations, yeah, for sure. We also have, like I said, the hand sanitizer we purchased once, purchased the place around as well. That really gives the overview of the layout. Security is another thing that we will have on site, being as though there's a beer and wine tent. We will have, and I did not print out the layout of the beer and wine tent, by the way, but we will have security in the beer and wine tent. It is operated differently than what you typically are used to for your beer and wine. We have it fenced in, so that way, those folks that have purchased a beer and wine ticket in the beer and wine tent have to stay in the beer and wine tent to let us finish and consume. They can't roam the grounds with a beer in hand. I kind of like the idea of them roaming the grounds with a beer in hand, but the SLA didn't like the idea of it. And I know that's something you're accustomed to, but for this event, they've never allowed us to do it, so I can keep it a while. And it works fine. It'll be completely fine. We also have a little VIP section in there for the folks and sponsors to go in, and then you'll have access to the VIP section as well. And that's just a little separate area. There's nothing really different about it other than it's an area that is just sectioned law. And that really covers everything unless I forgot something.
No, the only thing we wanted to mention, and everybody can chime in, is I'm sure you haven't forgotten because you don't forget anything, but the swimming pool is open that weekend. It's the last weekend our swimming pool is open. So there are people with passes that may want to come in and swim. And that's just a matter of alerting your gate people. Is that right?
Right, that. And there's also designated parking for them here on the list. And you'll see that there's, I don't know if it's not actually, you can't read it because it's probably too small, but it does say there's spaces that are designated for them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Security and item, I'm going to, I, finding help is a problem. Finding help is a problem, but we would like to have security and duty overnight. That's what our goal is. We would like to have a person around the block here, for no other reason than just people, the vendors and, you know, kids and things like that. But you're right, yeah. We would typically have, even at the fair, we have somebody, even that's fenced in, they can't even get into that, and we still have security and duty. I have security officers. We'll probably be at two during the day during operation, plus the constables, and then you'll have one at night.
Do you have help people or do you rent that issue?
Yeah, that's always welcome. Yeah, security seems to be one that we're, people are away. You know, it's a weekend that a lot of people go away. So, you know, I did start putting pillars out today, though. I did call the sheriff's office, asking if they could put it out to the PBA, and they will do that. We'll get people. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll fill it at some point. I would like somebody that's security licensed, obviously. This is not something that you want. If there is an issue, if there's hands-on involvement, for whatever reason, you want to have a license. Individual might handle it. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns?
That was pretty comprehensive.
It always is, and it's complicated, and it always will. No question. But I thank you again. I appreciate the opportunity to do this. And it certainly is not what I had thought we would do last year. I never dreamed of going this route, but then, as we went through it last year, opened our eyes to the potential of what we could possibly do here. And while it's not set up to have an event per se, it lends itself to it. It can be done.
Yeah, last year was certainly very successful.
Yeah. Well, we welcome you back, so.
How are the ticket sales going?
Ticket sales are going quite all right. I did a comprehensive presentation to J.P. Morgan Chase this past week, and the statistical data is trending beyond what we typically would get in 20, even in 2019, if I'm looking 31 days out. At that time, it was 31 days out. So, yeah. So that is a positive sign. I did have to increase pricing because the cost of everything has gone up. Cost of the insurance has gone up. The cost of everything that we're doing is going up, including, you know, the balloonist's rides and the fuel and the hotel rooms and all the little details of putting these people up when they come here. I have to feed all those balloonists when they're here, and I have to feed their crew. So that's part of it. And then a lot of these details that the public doesn't understand why they have to pay to come, but we're well aware of, it's not just renting a venue and inviting people to come as balloonists to fly. They have travel expenses, and they're coming from all over the place. I know we have balloonists committed to come from Florida. That's, I think, the furthest that we have. We do have balloonists that want to come from Canada. They were waiting to find out whether they could because of travel restrictions. I know that we have a couple of local balloonists, but not many. I think there's only three or four. But we do require a commercial pilot license. I may have mentioned that earlier. But we require that because, one, passengers. We do take paid passengers for them. And that is a requirement, obviously, for paid passengers, but also it's a safety thing, too. These folks do it all the time. You know, a private pilot doesn't necessarily have to fly the amount of hours that the others do. So that's why we do it.
Are they going to be landing in Brown River?
They'll land anywhere they can. Yeah, they'll land anywhere they can. And I ask that the public be aware of that, and if they're concerned about it, please let us know. We will put out a red zone map if people do call us and tell us they don't want them landing on their property. We didn't get any feedback from last year, which is unusual, which is good.
Everybody loved it. Your children loved it.
Yeah. Occasionally, you'll get somebody that just doesn't want them, and that's fine. You know, that's totally okay. And we will tell the balloonists, avoid this property. We'll put it on a map and show them during the briefing that this is a property to avoid. And that's okay. We'll do that.
So the fireworks are going to be on the hill that we're used to. And Jake, do you , I mean, we already talked about having the, being a part of the fireworks, or have you had any?
No, not yet. We haven't had any conversations yet, but ideally, we would have them on hand so that way that each evening they were there, if it did happen, we could quickly diffuse the situation. And ideally, we would have an ambulance on site, even just for someone that was in a heat stroke or somebody that got stung by a bee who can have an allergy, somebody that has a cut finger. You just don't know, these little things come up. We've never had any serious issues, even with the volume. We've had as many as 20,000 people at the fair on site. And at one time, of course, we're not going to have that here. We just don't have that capacity and ability. But, yeah. But, you know, either way, when you're dealing with the public, it's health concerns, so you want to make sure that we have something nearby.
And I think that's definitely, last year, you did have agents solve them last year.
Actually, I was on call. Jake and I were here. As far as, they just stayed at station two.
So that was something, you know, how we, just fireworks, definitely, that kind of problem. That's not major, the guy that operated that. For that, the ambulance, fortunately, I am confident they approve of it on this year, but just mildly, maybe dedicated to be here.
Right.
If, you know, there's something happened down the road, one of our houses or something like that, I'd rather you have to leave. Go tend to that, and then they would come and actually put on the gas. You know, they run the B here exclusively just to this, you have to answer that calls.
And that's common, even with the mask out, I admit, that's common. The ambulance would have to leave for a call. We did have a couple mine ranger entries where they just took them to check them out of the hospital and they came back.
If you have to, we have one of this town, a little staff, so if I believe one called them, they'll come back, go and, you know, have to move them. So that shouldn't be an issue.
Thirty years of doing this, we haven't had any plans. We're going to keep it that way.
It's giving an opportunity to work with the public.
Yeah.
We really appreciate you being here because the park is beautiful. Enjoy the balloon getting here, but everybody absolutely loves it. It's just such an gorgeous spot to watch all these, and people are really looking forward to it.
It is a very unique situation for the balloonists, too. They like it here because of the liability. There's a lot of farmland. So that allows them opportunity to put down and not put down someone's backyard. You know, it's a lot easier to do that, especially because these are hay fields, which hay farmers don't mind as much because it's not an expensive crop, as opposed to a lot of the other crop that's grown, particularly more so up in north part of the county. So they really liked it here, and they're excited to come back. So they were, they were very, very excited to come back. In fact, we had to fight over the weekend because they were, they have, all the festivals were pushing to fall, as you can imagine. So they, they didn't have any availability. So I told them, this is the weekend, and they all said, we're in. Very good. All right.
You're so thorough. I have to say that.
Yeah, you covered all the bases.
We tried to. So please tell us if there's stuff we missed. Don't be shy about it. Let us know. We're happy to address it.
As long as you can have safe, secure, and you're letting them all over there, perfect.
So hopefully, we can get together with the Unionville Fire Department and figure all that out and make sure we're, we're fine. Great. Terrific. Well, thank you, everyone. I'll leave you with this. You can keep all that stuff. I don't need the maps. And if anyone has questions, anybody that uses this online, they can come down to Town Hall and see it.
Frank, thanks so much for being here.
My pleasure.
We're looking forward to it when it comes up with all you. And I think, Jake, you're not going to be here in a second. Everything's set up from the way you expected and recorded.
My goal is to get Jake and hot air balloon this year.
Tom's in, huh? And Tom. We're going to be here to be stalking.
Just not together. All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You know how to get ahold of me.
Yeah. Take care. That sounds good. It sounded like I was going to work that out.
Yeah, for sure.
Gives us a lot of comfort, so we're glad you could do that.
Yeah, guys, I'm sure a lot of people can talk about that, you know, at the meeting right now. Twenty-four, twenty-one, I'm sure what, what the county or all their kind of stuff.
That's great.
What says the gate for the closed, eight and, nine, I'm sorry. What says the gate closed?
You mean, it should be?
Nine and two thirty.
Well, that's the first round of balloons that are going around, and then they're stopped. So they won't be admitting spectators.
So between nine and?
Excuse me, supervisor must have an unmute, just so we can keep that up. Oh, you did?
I'm holding the, no, I guess.
Maybe we'll be parking people in their spaces or anything like that. So it'll just be pretty mellow. So maybe there'll be some public, but even that, it's going to be a little.
So between nine and two thirty, Jack, when the hot air balloon's out, they're in the air and they're?
No, they're parked.
No, they're parked.
Oh, so the morning, they're already done at that point?
Yeah, early morning and late afternoon.
The winds are better. You know, they have outfits. Their experience is always early and then late.
Super early. Why nine and two thirty?
So between nine and two thirty, there's nothing going on?
Well, there's, the vendors are going to be there, and it's going to be quiet because the people that are coming in for the balloons, they won't.
They'll start churning up again.
Yeah. So some people may come in and walk around. It's just that some people.
The crowds usually shift. You get one crowd in the morning and one crowd in the afternoon.
Yeah. And there were some people hanging out. There were some people hanging out that would just relax for the day. They were only going to be here one day.
So I'm trying to decide age at my mind.
Yeah.
Annual typical time, or is it, so nine and?
Probably just while the gates are open, or you need it.
Once the gates close, they can leave at two, two o'clock again.
Yeah, I would think so.
And I think also Frank will be in touch with you to just confirm all of this, but that's where the crowds are here. All right.
We'll make it work anyway.
Yeah, it's going to be so much fun, I think, for, good for the town and good for the residents.
Oh, yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
Exciting coming to town for a change.
Yeah.
That's probably your request, right?
Well, yeah, but you know what? He lives, he's a resident. So he knew better right away.
People always think that's the range, right?
Yeah.
Isn't it terrible? He knew how to do it. We wanted our, we wanted our name.
That's good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Have a good night. Okay. Well, that's thorough.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm not surprised. I mean, look how well-planned out that thing is on the maps and everything you handed out. I mean, it's all thought out. Every possible scenario is pretty well addressed.
He's good. Yeah, he's a good organizer. He's terrific, and he's got a good staff. Okay, so let's, why don't we do our, now, did you have anything you wanted to add, anything that you're concerned about, or you feel uncomfortable in?
No, I mean, he's, he's got it, he runs a really tight ship. I'm pretty comfortable with all of this. It just, if it stops raining, then we'll be.
Yeah. Is he going to get the gravel or you for the?
He, he will. He's like right on top of it. So, yeah.
Okay, good.
But, yeah, as long as it stops raining, we should be totally fine. If it rains, then it's going to be a different sort.
It rains.
Oh, yeah, rain will, rain will kill everything.
You do have the ultimate say-so on whether fields are acceptable for use.
As far as I know, right?
You do, and, and, and Frank knows you do, and you'll be here that day if it's wet. So, I mean, it'll be fine.
We'll go from there. It's just safe.
Yeah, you gotta, but, and, but let's talk about that for a second because we had a couple of meetings about it. So if it rains, and if Jake's up there, and, you know, Beakman Soccer and other people use those fields, and, you know, they rented them for the season. But if that had to be closed, that we talked about, there's going to be parking along the road.
Yeah, so be it.
Duncan Road.
Got to protect those fields.
Yeah.
I don't think the ball fields are as critical, right?
No, I mean, the ball fields aren't as critical, but they get super wet as well.
Oh, I know, but that'll be all balloon stuff.
Yep. So, I mean, it just depends. Yeah. You know, it depends on how, like, this field's nice. It drains to the bottom.
Yeah.
But, you know, if it's.
And I think you could still use the field over across the stream, too, if you had to.
I think we should keep that clear. That's where the helicopter.
I know, but if it's raining, you need parking.
I mean, that, that, the, the way in over there, the problem is that gets really wet.
Yeah.
I mean, and we've had the, we've had the firework trucks stuck over there before because just the gate and the entrance gets wet. So we're just going to have to kind of play it by ear and see.
Just keep our fingers.
Yeah. If the weather stays like it has been for the past week, we'll be totally.
Yeah, usually August, the ground hardens up and dries out, even if you get rain around the end of the month.
I hope so. I hope we.
Overwhelming.
You don't expect that in July, though, either.
Right. Third wind is July on record, I mean.
So hopefully, it's already passed.
I hope so. My mower's worn out.
Yeah, it's been brutal.
It is.
Well, so far, other than that, and we've got, I mean, the only other choice we have is people will be parked along the road, but we discussed him having extra security out there, making sure people aren't speeding when they're going through and all that because there'll be pedestrians. So I think he understands that. He's got it, and he's.
Yeah, he's, he's extremely communicative, and he's really hoping to pretty much anything. So he knows if it's wet, we just can't do anything about it.
Yeah, he's, and he's, he's doing this, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. If you don't have anything else, I don't want to keep you because you're, yeah, you're busy. And have a great weekend.
Thank you. I'll see you guys later.
Thank you for being here, Jake. Appreciate it. Okay. So let's go, we've got some more things to talk about, and then we have to have an executive session.
Yeah, all right.
So let me go through my folder. I've started the budget meetings with the department heads. So we've, I've had three meetings, not that many, but we're going to, you know, everything will be done by the end of August to sit down with the board. The only thing I added to the cover sheet this year in going out with the, to go to all the department heads is the normal things about requests for next year, salary support needs, equipment, revenue ideas, cost-saving ideas and all that. But then I added a long-term infrastructure, two to five years, or large expense needs, so that people can comment on what. So that's actually helping. Some people are putting some really good ideas in there. Our budget schedule, the town board, you guys have your budget schedule. So there's nothing to talk about then, except I want to make sure everybody remembers our first of our four public hearings is going to be on the, you know, our regular meeting will be, it'll be at seven, so that we can hear. We haven't done anything with the budget if we're just starting to work with the department heads, but it gives the public a chance to come in. If they have an idea, then that will be starting one of four. Everything else I sent you in writing. Everything else I sent you in writing. Now, there's no particular order to the stack. I will announce to, during the, you know, the supervisor's report, I will announce that we got our, half of our American Rescue Plan Fund money, $235,243.97, and that immediately went into a segregated account, which I'll mention to the residents when we, but just so you guys all know that it's here. And it is in New York class and something labeled and it can't touch it unless we have all of our ducks in a row. And actually, it, it's been discussed at some of our supervisors' and mayor's meeting that I might even send in an email to the Treasury Department saying, these are our plans, making sure they send us something back in writing that says that's okay, so they don't type to take, try to take the money away later, saying, we never gave you, you know, because the rules keep changing and people are still really confused. So we'll talk about that more in depth later. I wanted to talk about, and this week, I'll just give you a heads up. So Ed, Katie and I have been talking about a way that we can have two-way texting so that residents who see a tree down the road can text into a number and Ed would get it immediately and deal with it sooner rather than this delay of when they call in and, or whatever that, and then also.
They don't text his phone?
No, they don't. Sometimes they call and leave messages and sometimes it happens at weird times. And the other, the other reason for having two-way texting is we think we'd get a few of those. He thinks he'd get a few of those, especially after the storm, that one we had on July 17th. Sunday, there were, getting a lot of information on Sunday would have been good quicker. But also he wants a way, if it could be safer for people, the idea would be that he could take, send out a message to anybody that opts in that says Rick's Road is going to be closed. You know, South Parliament has this issue. It won't be open until three o'clock this afternoon, things like that. There aren't going to be that many of them, but we, we found a decent one. It was hard to find a two-way. We found a decent one.
Someone just ripped through here on the floor.
Did they really?
Yeah, I heard it.
Should we look?
No, I think they're gone now, but they just went across the back end.
I was wondering.
Did you see it?
I did, I saw.
It wasn't in the parking lot?
Was that what it was?
He came in a motorcycle.
We'll just have to tell them to slow down, huh? So anyway, we're, we're going to test out this service and see if people opt in and if it's a way for him to communicate quicker. And he uses texting, but he doesn't do Facebook. He doesn't do any of that. And it'll get anybody that opts in, it would be a quicker way for them to hear.
Good.
So that's an idea.
Does he, he gets email on his phone, does he?
Yeah, he never uses it. He, I don't think he uses that because he's got his Samsung and he uses texting and he uses the telephone.
Yeah, he uses email, which is not, I don't.
He does it at his desk in the morning.
Yeah.
He checks his, in the morning and in the afternoon when he comes back in. Oh, yeah. So conversate, this is just, these are to alert you, but also for you to think about. So we had Vazco come over and empty the oil at the recyclers.
Yeah, so they're bill, we signed the bill.
Yeah, oh, good, thanks. So they came over. So we have a thousand gallon tank at the recycling center. We provide a service and, and John and I were talking about it one day. You remember instituting that service. People really like it.
Yeah, club excavators. Mike Hogan donated the tank.
Oh, really? Oh, I didn't know that. That's great. So it now, but it's always 250 gallons short. There's probably a lot of sludge down at the bottom of it. But that might be fine because we'll just have them come over and pick it up. And we are charging a dollar a gallon so that we should be able to recoup our expense of having them come and empty it. But we do have to make sure that, and, and any of your suggestions are helpful. People were coming, we have to either lock it, this is Vazco's suggestion. We'd have to lock it and have one person responsible for it. We just have to make sure that there are people coming and if the guys aren't 100% sure that it'll fit because they don't want it to spill, they're leaving containers of oil all around on the ground until we comes, they come to, you know, take it away. And what Vazco says is, you know, first of all, you're not allowed to do that, have any loose oil on the, on the ground like that. But they said, you know, if one person, I don't know how we want to set it up, but let's think about it. Somebody should have the key and then people get turned away. Like that's it. They're coming on Tuesday, they're coming next week, but until they get here, no more submissions.
Does that tank have a meter?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
And they were pouring stuff in, the reason they're a little gun shy about it is they have poured stuff in before and had it spill and we can't, we can't have spill.
Yeah, if you don't know how much is in there.
They've got to stick the tank on a regular basis to see what the level is and when it gets near the top, shut it down.
Yeah, so maybe we can.
Make sure it gets picked up before reaching.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And they, and they'll come regularly. So we can ask them to do whatever. They're very helpful. It's, you know, it's a waste of money to get a new tank because I asked, I called them and I said, could you clean it out? Because I'm not, you know, real familiar with this stuff. And she thought that was kind of amusing. No, we can't clean it out. You have to, it's, there is a lot of sludge in there though. They're missing, you know.
It's been there for 30 some years, so.
Has it been 30 years?
Yeah.
How many gallons is that?
It's a thousand gallon tank and like last time when they came, it was, they got, oh, I can't read it. I can't read it. It looks like 726 gallons. So she said it's just sludge and any way to clean it out, absolutely, we cannot clean it out. She goes, just keep using it and we'll come more often. Okay. And then, but to replace the tank is $2,000. So she's not worth your money. She said, we'll just come more often and it'll.
Yeah.
You can always find somebody.
Well, if we could, maybe that's a more efficient way with a meter, with a meter.
We should get another tank. So if it does get.
Be able to put a gauge on that.
We're just having overflow tanks. We just use this one and if it overflows, it's going into a tank. It's not going.
That would be great. Does anybody know, anybody who might donate a tank or do an overflow tank like that?
I have six in my car.
Do you, would you?
Here's, here's. Not a shower, it's back.
We're going to have the balloon land back there and we'll see all your, your tanks. Would you be interested in coming over and take a look or maybe? All right. So why don't we talk about, and then the idea about a meter, maybe you could give us your professional. All right, that'd be great. Thank you, Pat. That's terrific. Okay. So that might get resolved and we'll see what Pat says. So that was one thing. I'll repeat these at the meeting. I hate that before you guys do, but Krista Sullivan, our longstanding clerk working for Paul Panko, is resigning, is retiring on August 31st. So just so everybody knows.
And it's up to Paul to get a new court clerk, right?
Well, we're having a meeting about that. He has some ideas, the Jorinas have some suggestions. So we're going to have a meeting to talk about how next year might play out and what their thoughts are. So that's non-important. Okay, here's one that we will, I'll, we have to go through it again during correspondence, but I find, and I'll read it out loud then. I'm not going to read it out loud now. But basically the bottom line is the Duchess County SPCA is no longer going to be able to provide service to us as in getting, taking, having dogs dropped off there.
Well, Mary Jean doesn't bring too many dogs there.
She really doesn't, but how could, it, it's amazing to me. So these people are saying that.
Wash their hands of it?
No, they're, they're providing housing only for dogs from towns where they also perform the animal control.
That's ridiculous.
So they won't be able to renew our housing contract. And our reasons for implementing this change are purely financial. We lose too much money on housing-only contracts, which I find hard to believe because to get your dog out of there, you have to pay the going rate.
A lot of money, yeah.
And you want, you don't get your dog unless the fees are paid. So how could, it's like incremental revenue to them. I don't understand their decision.
Yeah, and we use it so seldomly.
Yeah.
Why would they not?
Are there any rescues in the area that we could approach?
Well, I mean, Mary Lou, Mary Jean, sorry, and I are having our budget discussion. It's on the calendar in August and during that discussion, she has some ideas. She also, remember, I think it was in 2016, there were some additional, there was a kennel that she purchased for her that she has in her house.
Yeah, right. Because she does keep some.
She does keep them there.
Short term.
And then she wants to talk and maybe we'll add to that or maybe we'll think of a different location where we put them and she'll just take care of them. But she said she doesn't get that many because this website is really helpful. You know, the one you post on and she posts on. Yeah. Yeah. So she said that works really well and she doesn't mind having them in her house given she's got one, I think, or two. I can't remember. And, and kennels are not expensive, but they're outdoors and in the winter and that might be tough.
Yeah, we could pay her more to store them.
And then get more equipment. She's going to, she's been thinking about it. I read her the letter when we got it. She's going to bring her ideas during the budget discussion. So we'll all hear about that at the meeting. But anyway, I just find it odd, but.
Yeah, that's, the county's dropping the ball on that one.
Yeah. However, our residents will love it because going all the way over there and paying all those fees was tough, so.
Well, they're going to pay more here.
Right. But it's also incentive for them to get their permits.
Yeah.
To make sure their vaccine tags on and all that.
Yeah.
It'll be more incentive to get all that done because they'll get returned quicker.
Yeah.
So it's a good discussion to have at the board meeting and especially after, we'll bring Mary Jean in. After, I was going to price out whatever her suggestions were and we'll put them in the budget and see. So that's coming, but it was a little bit of a surprise. Mortgage tax was again, very high. We had, we were up to $28,000. I'll give you those numbers too, but so that was really good. We had that employee that was working off hours because they had three family emergencies back to back. Remember, I read it to you at one of the earlier board meetings that one of our employees had so many family emergencies in a line that they had gotten, they were, they kind of owed us hours.
Yeah.
And that has all been paid off.
Paid back? Oh, good.
Paid back. And I, and I'll go through that in forward meeting, so it's in the minutes. And, and the auditor that comes in will know that they paid, they paid back their hours and they've also used their accumulated sick time. So they're good. But we'll go through that. Oh, and I have a present for Steve. I wanted you to look this over, Steve. I'll give all of you a copy, but maybe Steve could take a look at this for the next board meeting. This is, um, for you to take a look for regarding, this is who's going to be taking care of our solar development. So we'll chat about that again and we were going to talk about that tonight about what maintenance we were looking for. And I'd sent in the, this is another conversation. I sent in the fire advisory letter that the chair, Steve Fraser, had prepared along with the group. Sent it into them and then wrote them an email about the other things that we were concerned about and sent it in to David, the owner. And they have their own operations manager who has been here. He is preparing to take over as soon as that contract, the contractors are out. But we have a few conflicts. For example, I went over there last week and I took a bunch of pictures. And I did get the, Steve, to your point, the DOT, one of the things that was questioned was whether or not there's that right of way. So I spoke with Mike Sassi, who's in charge of our region, and Mike said, he said, you tell them to mow that area. You, you make them do whatever you want them to do in that area, make it look like everything else. He said, it's kind of like the right of way the DOT might have near somebody's home. He said, we don't issue permits to people to maintain the area near the curb. He goes, we will never track it. He said, but we want you as the landowner to feel comfortable with the way it's maintained. So you have your people take care of that and don't worry about us.
Okay.
So that issue went away. So I've got pictures of that to send to them. Now George has requested before the contractors leave that we make them do everything the way it should be. So the photographs that are taken then are what we put in the file. So this is the way it's got to look.
Okay. Good idea.
So we want to do that. And then he, I've got mine from last week and then he went by this week and I swear to God, it's the funniest thing. The poles were supposed to be painted black. He took a picture of a bunch of poles. They painted half of them. Like the front half and he goes, I hope they ran out of paint. The front half is painted and the back half wasn't. So we have things, maybe they didn't run out of paint. Maybe they had a guy spraying along the front and then he didn't come around.
Wasn't allowed in.
But yeah, couldn't, he didn't have coat. I don't know, but we still have.
Well, they were told they were painted, so it would less, be less obvious. So they probably figured you're only going to see the front from the road.
Well, that, that's not to the landlord's liking, so the, you know.
I know. I'm just saying.
And that's what the contract says.
Might be what they thought.
The landlord's accommodation, so to speak. So just to be clear, just because I'm going to send the new ops manager who wrote to introduce himself and sent me and I'll forward it to you guys. I only printed one out. I'll give it to you for the next meeting. But we have, they have a guy that had, it must be a good contract. They're not using, they have their own company that they hired, not, the contractor had had somebody from Poughkeepsie submit a bid. But this guy, it sounds, looks like from what, and Steve, you can report on this after you've had a chance to read it during the meeting, but it sounds like they, they hired this one guy to take care of all of their solar fields. And then in that is a pricing for Unionville as well as the others. So it's a good contract for one company, but I talked to Rick and I said, listen, it's, it's string trimming, weeding that bed and more than brush hogging, it's mowing. And he, he seemed to understand, but I want to make sure it's clear to all of us.
And in the winter, snow plowing to make it accessible if there's emergency there.
Right. So that's what we want to go over.
Can't gate clear.
Yeah. So same things we talked about tonight, it's string trimming, right?
Mowing.
Mowing in addition to the.
Litter pickup.
Snow plowing, snow removal, weeding the bed. That one bed with, well, the long bed. For those poor boxwoods.
Yeah. For the mini boxwoods.
Can they do the same thing on the other side to block out those concrete thing?
Which, the, the ballast, the ones, you mean on the lands?
Yeah. Can they not plant in that swell?
We did not request that. It's pretty common to see those ballast open and exposed. We did not request that. It's pretty common to see those ballasts open and exposed, the other ones I visited. They didn't, nobody was hiding them. It's, it makes it harder to maintain underneath them and to clean up.
Depends on where the cap is too.
Yeah, that's true. I thought the cap went to the road.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would determine whether or not they could, is whether the cap is there or not. Remember, you can't, you can't plant anything under the grass over top of that membrane.
Yeah, that's the rule.
Yeah. And it's a big cap.
We're gonna have to flood the full. We're troubled to reach it.
Like fiber streets, like uh, Bruton's have fiber streets, they don't have.
They don't, the roads won't do well there, of course, but I'm talking about. They don't allow anything.
Oh, you mean to plant on the outside of that fence there?
Yeah.
I think we discussed this a long time ago and I believe that we were under the impression that that cap extended out there. It's a very large cap.
Reclaiming to landfill that I take care of as well. Anytime they see even the smallest twig growing, I'm gonna get down there right away and cut it.
Well, and also on, you know, that, those four boxwoods, that whole side didn't turn out the way we planned because, you know, we planned, I told you, we planted these little viburnums like two months, three months ago at my house, just little ones, because we were doing, putting up a, you know, just a what is it called? Just a block. And they're like up here full bloom, they're huge. That would have been a good one, except. Yeah. Anyway, I think that, you know, i- if they keep it maintained, we did it look okay, so.
I mean, it'll, it'll look better.
That's for gesture too. That's right.
Plus, these ones seem to be brown.
We've had all this rain and I don't think it went over there.
Yeah, I think it must have missed.
For months, they didn't have any. It was awful. Okay, I wanted to talk to, uh, I would like some feedback on this. Um, so as far as our resolution, resolutions go in the meeting, we're gonna have the, we're gonna finish up, we're gonna continue for the best value.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll continue with town clerk and that's all on, that's fine. Um, but also um, we, there there was a a a resolution that I, we, I think we should pass before, you know, um, there's an election or even future elections. And 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 just to remind everybody, um, we did this, we've done this. I remember doing it, you must have always done it, but we've done it at all of our budget meetings. But nobody told us we had to do it. It's just that it's just a natural thing. Whenever we sat down and talked about the budget, regardless of when it was, I had my little list and you, or you guys would ask me and we would review, we would uh, read out loud all the changes we had made since the last time we had been together.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody'd say, okay, yeah, 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 yeah. So I think it would be smart for us, uh, at Prudential, I think for the residents, if we had a resolution that we all agreed to now, that says that because there's an election coming up this year and there will be one every two years, I think based on, you remember what happened in Stanford last year? I think it would be really important if we had a resolution that said for the residents in the town of Unionvale, if there are any changes to the budget, especially, you know, we don't have to, there's an election on the second. Some years it's the third, fourth, but you know, but the budget doesn't get approved until the twentieth.
Right.
So anything can happen between the fifth and the twentieth. What if the residents don't know, like what happened in Stanford? Do you remember that story? I don't know if you. So, so what happened there was um, the budget, and there's a process that we all follow, and that's why we have, we have more, two more public hearings than we're even required to, because we want transparency. But they, there was an, um, there was an election in Stanford and um, the people that were currently in lost. And after the election, between the election and when the board approved the budget, right around November twentieth, they reduced the taxes by sixty percent because they had so much left in their fund balance, they just used it to cover the taxes. And it was voted on and approved by the board and most of the board members said they didn't even know about the change. So then the people get their tax bill and it's sixty percent lower, a new supervisor and a couple new board members or one, I don't know how many came in. The old ones didn't know, the new ones didn't know because they were new and all of a sudden.
Somebody must have known.
The two people that left, I guess, but they um, then then they started out the year sixty percent down on their revenue and they had no clue and then, and then that was, that was a major problem.
Could they not uh, make a special uh, amendment to the budget?
Well, they took care of it. They had the OSC down, they took care of it, but I'll tell you what they're doing this year. They're having to raise the 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 taxes twice for the last two years, because they certainly didn't do anything last year. So they're raising them twice, like a hundred and twenty percent to get the last two years back, just to be even. I don't want, you know, we never want that to happen here. I don't think it would happen here, but I think we have a habit of every time, since I've been doing this, whenever we got to, whether it was before the election, I think if I look at our schedules, before the election, um, we have a budget hearing and a budget meeting and there are gonna be tweaks. We we've always tweaked it with with good ideas.
Yeah, with minor changes.
Yeah, we tweaked it with some good ideas, but see, then we actually do the approving.
Right, always after the election.
It's always after the election because that's state law. I mean,
Right.
The state doesn't care if you do it early. It's just that to have four public hearings and to have, we meet once a month.
Yeah.
So I thought that um, what I don't want is the state telling us what to do down the road. We 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 have our own plan, it works really nicely. But to protect the public, we we could pass our own resolution that says, which we do anyway, anything that changes after the general election that we, and we do it anyway, that we read out every single change, any tweak, anything that's gone, any penny that's been moved that, and and before the town board approves it on the twentieth.
But what's the point? We're not gonna change it anything significant.
Well, I think if we have a resolution and we're not here ten years from now.
Well, somebody ten years and I could uh, change that resolution and write a new one.
Well, that would look bad though, wouldn't it, to change it?
If they're gonna change the budget at the last minute.
Well, yeah, but they do, but then at least the public knows. You know what I mean? The public knows. I don't know that the public's, you know, like if if, I I happen to know that some people up at the OSC and stuff are thinking, oh, maybe we make everybody approve their budgets before the twentieth, which for us would be a pain because of our schedule. You know, we, our schedule works really nicely.
But I think that was an isolated case at Stanford. I I don't see it as wide squared.
Well, no, but don't, don't you think it'd be a good, well, we do it anyway, you mean, because we do it anyway and that's our.
Yeah.
So do you think that the people after us will continue to read out every change before the budget gets budgeted on?
It's up to them.
Without them being told. And they can change it, but at least you think that.
Anything we, we, any motion we make or any changes doesn't go beyond our board. I mean, if somebody wants to change it back.
But people would be aware that they say, hey, we wanna not have to read out loud those changes.
That's the thing, every, every board member here answers to the residents.
Yeah.
Election time. If we, if any of us do something that the residents are not happy with, well, then they don't get reelected. And that's your control right there.
Yeah. I mean, if another board changed things, look at the crowds we get. A lot of things could get changed and people wouldn't know.
They wouldn't know?
Well, how many people come to our meetings and and listen, pay attention?
Yeah, it just makes me nervous. I I don't know. I think that we do it and we should be proud that we do it and we make sure everybody knows everything, but.
I think that resolution makes it look like we had something in mind that we don't, we want to protect from ourselves.
Well, no, because we've had, we have a pattern. We do the same thing every time, so why would that?
Public. If we call attention to it, I think the public would be concerned.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, it's never been an issue.
No, it's never, was never an issue in there in Stanford either before.
Well.
Well, we do it anyway, and I guess as long as people see that we read out every, what happened since the last last meeting when we messed with the budget, we read every little line out.
Yeah, I think we do a very stellar job of
Yeah.
Keeping the public informed. I I think we should just keep going the way we are.
Think people are comfortable? Okay, it's just one of those things. I I don't want anybody worrying. Okay. Um, nobody's disagreeing with John, right? We're on the same page? Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The next one is um, oh, I'll mention this in the meeting just for you guys to know, um, you know that company Sweet Pete?
Mm-hmm.
They made a fifteen hundred dollar donation to the Equestrian Center.
Wow.
Isn't that nice? It was really great. So, and you know, the town can accept donations and we just set up different buckets to receive it. Somebody can write to the town, they can write us a check and then list what it's for. And then we have separate buckets for, so we're keeping a a special donation bucket for the Equestrian Center. Um, and that's really all that I have except for the executive session stuff that we have to talk about.
All right. I'll make a motion when we go to executive session.
Okay, so we're gonna go to executive, executive session and then after that, when we finish, we're done.
Okay.
So it's probably. Yes. That's it.
There'll be no discussion afterwards, I guarantee it.
We're packing up and going home, Alfreda. So rather than us move, since there's only two of you, Pat, we'll talk tomorrow. I'll call you about that. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Yeah, you too. At the printer. Left. Will you show Pat where the printer is? Kevin's coming. Thank you. So we're gonna, um, I guess we sign off now? Is that what we do? Okay, I guess that will stop the meeting because when we come back, we're not taking any action. We're sharing information about potential litigation and that'll be that.